This conference will now be recorded.
This conference is being recorded. Today is 6:08 and it is the Rainham Planning Board meeting. Thursday, June 4th. We are on Zoom. And we are being taped recorded. Tonight's votes, any votes that we take, so everybody knows, has to be in, I will be asking roll call vote for each member of the board for anything that we do. And other than that, Bob, anything I have to add before we get started?
No, I think you're good to go.
All right, very good. So the first thing on our agenda is a Form J for Oak Street Westcott. And I have the Form J. Now, this seems, the plan was done in 2004. I looked up the recorded plan of book 429, page 35 at the registry, and it is recorded. It was done by Art Borden. Three members. I believe it was Chris Gallagher, Burke Fountain, and Kyle Carlson was the three that signed on the plan. So apparently, they never received or they never asked for a Form J. Are we, are we good with? Apparently, they must be selling the property or something to realize there was no Form J, so. It is recorded. Are we good with signing off on the Form J? Bob, questions?
I believe Maureen did all the background work on this, and I think it's fair to be signed. It just was missed back when it was approved.
Okay. Chris, you've got questions? Chris? Chris Gallagher. Do you have any questions? I see your voices on. Nope. I don't know if you can hear me. Okay, so I have a question. How do we do signing? How are we going to do signing?
Dan, I believe if you just vote to approve, we can get the signatures later on in Maureen's office.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I may, with the Selectments Meeting where they have documents to sign, what they do is they each approve it verbally, and they designate a person, and in the case of the Selectment, they designate the Town Administrator to sign for them. We could have Maureen do the signing for us if we so vote. It's just an alternative, whatever you want to do.
Okay. I'm not sure of that procedure, if Maureen would be able to sign. I think if anybody, the clerk of the board should probably be the one that we designate to sign.
That's okay, too, yeah.
That way, the air, it would stay with the board.
True.
All right, so I have the Form J. It's Paul A. Westcott and Brenda Westcott. Again, the plans were done in 2004. It is recorded, book 429, page 35. This does say that the planning board hereby certifies that the requirements for construction and improvements called for by the covenant on dated 8/31/2004 are in compliance. Now, none of us, I have no idea if they're in compliance, but I, from 2004 to today, I guess we're not going to, we're not going to go there. There's no way of us going back to 2004. So if I'll ask for roll call vote, Burke, questions, I'll take you a vote.
I'm in favor of the release.
Okay. Russ?
I'm in favor.
Chris?
Yeah, I'm in favor.
John?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Okay, so, and I myself am in favor, so. All are in favor for signing the Form J. I make a motion that we designate clerk, who is Russ, to sign all of our paperwork that we are doing on Zoom. Russ, if you can't take that for health reasons or anything else, please let me know before we vote.
No, I'm good.
Okay, so all in favor of having Russ, our clerk, sign everything that we do tonight?
Aye.
Is needed. Russ, you? Aye, Burke?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
And John?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Next on our agenda, Public Care and 1729 Broadway Site Plan. This was in front of us quite a while ago. We do have correspondence from NICH.
I'm going to mute and step out.
Okay. Yeah. All right, so we do have correspondence from on this. He had, I had an email. Frank Gallagher, Gallagher Engineering, sent Steve, "Any progress on your review?" And then sent him his comments on the review. There was 25 items. That was March 24th. On April 3rd, Frank Gallagher Engineering sent a revised, saying attached to the new plans. We just received, a while ago, Maureen sent over an additional. Did everybody see the plans? And I will, I say everybody, but let me start. Plans from NICH, they're online. John, did you see the plans? You have them. Russ, did you see the plans? Burke?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and I saw them. All right, so. Through NICH's letter. NICH Engineering reviewed and revised, reviewed the revised set of plans, which again, the revised set of plans is based on Frank Gallagher's update. In his, in his plans, he says that, he gives a list of waivers, and he gives an official list of waivers. Bob and Maureen did a Certificate of Action, so the waivers that I'm going to read are going to be off the original, the Certificate of Action that we're going to be giving. On this certificate, it says, Section 4.21, waiver from requirement providing a photometric plan. I will do this if we're in the meeting room. If anybody has a question with one of the waivers, just please butt in and ask a question. And then when I'm done reading all the waivers, I will now go again, one to one, one by one. So, Section 4.21, waiver from requirements to provide a photometric plan. And Frank, I should have mentioned, Frank Gallagher is present.
Yes.
Maureen McKinney is present in the meeting. I believe Sean Carnes is present. Paul Westcott and Luke Kline. They're in, on standby, I guess.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you, you just said, "Jump in if you have to," so. So actually, that waiver we asked for initially, the waiver from supplying a photometric plan?
Yes.
But, but we, we did wind up supplying that plan to you.
Okay.
I emailed you a copy of a photometric plan. I'd say about 10 days ago, or maybe two weeks ago.
Okay. So, then let me ask you. I just received June 2nd waiver request. Is this the only 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 waivers that you're asking for?
I believe that's the only ones, with just, there's one thing that's sort of up in the air, and if you look at NICH's letter from May 4th, they, they have on page 2 at the very bottom, additional waiver recommendation.
Yes, landscape plan.
Right. Now, I guess, I'll leave that up to the board, but I showed pretty much all of the landscaping that was intended for the site on Plan Sheet Number 2.
Yeah, the only problem is, our regs say it has to be stamped by a registered
Okay, yeah.
that's the problem.
Okay, so, and I guess that would be a waiver that we, we would need.
Yeah, and I did add that to our proposal certificate at the bottom. Okay, so, let me see, then we have. I'm going to revise Bob's waiver list. We have 4.22, 515, 54, 562, 572, 573. Okay, all right, so I have, I have the list correct. All right, so starting over with the waivers. Section 4.22, waiver from requirement to provide a traffic impact study prepared by a registered professional engineer. The plan is for a 7,000 square foot building, requires 14 parking spaces, indicating that the proposed use would generate very little new traffic. Furthermore, this site area of Broadway has several hundred feet of site distance. Waiver 5.15, waiver from requirement for parking lot containing 10 or more parking spaces shall have 1, 1 tree per 8 parking spaces. Such trees located within the parking area and to have at least 4 inches in diameter within a minimum of 60 feet perimeter of landscape area. The plan is, the plan shows proposed 4 new trees, twice the requirement amount, placed in the gas rather than paint areas. Bob, on your proposed, yeah, number 4 I took out because they're not, they don't need that. They had changed the drainage to a 3 to 1 slope, so that one's not needed. Section 5.4, waiver from the requirement that prohibits parking between proposed building. Plan shows 11 spaces. They do have bollards and concrete bumpers. Section 5.62, waiver from the requirement that states curbing shall not be bitimous concrete. Shall not be bitimous. The plan proposes vertical granite curbing at the project entrance and curb cut burn throughout. Section 5.7.2, waiver from the requirement that the width of access connecting to the existing roadway not exceed 25 feet. Proposes a wider entrance to accommodate emergency vehicles and trucks. Now, a question for you, Frank. I did see that you filed Matthew C. Curb Cut. Are they going to be okay with your entrances? Have you heard back at all?
No, I haven't heard back, and actually, I haven't technically filed it yet. Just because they won't accept a filing without a signed plan by the planning board, so. So I haven't filed it, but I have recently filed 2 others in the town of Bridgewater, and so I know what they're looking for as far as an entrance, and they, they're looking for what I've got shown on this plan.
Okay. All right, so you're comfortable with that?
Yes.
The next one is Section 5.7.3, waiver from the requirement that the access connection shall provide a minimum distance of 40 feet from the property line to the beginning of any parking. Plan is proposing a 21 foot from property line to parking. And the last one is going to be a landscapes plan stamped by a professional landscape architect. So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. So, 7 waivers that I read. Russ? You agree with the waivers, waiver request? You approve the waiver request, I should say.
Um, yeah.
Burke, yes.
John?
Yes.
And Dan, yes? So the waivers are approved. So next is going to be to approve the site plan. Site plan is committed by Sean Carnes, SKC Properties LLC, Rainham, Mass. For proposed construction, 7,000 square foot warehouse building and associated parking utilities, clearing, grading, landscape, all at the address of 1729 Broadway. Rainham Assessors Map 3, Lot 71. We have Burke, Russ, John, myself, that will be voting. NICH Engineering is all set with their review. I have the bonds letter that we just voted on, so I am going to ask for a a motion. Burke, would you like to make a motion to?
I make a motion that we approve the site plan subject to the waivers that have already been approved.
Located at 1729 Broadway, Rainham, Mass.
Yes.
Okay, Russ?
Second that.
Second of that? Question? Start with John. John, you're microphoneed. There you go.
In favor. Aye, yes.
In favor. Russ?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote? So I do have, as I mentioned earlier, a proposed Certificate of Action. Bob, the adjustments on the Certificate of Action. We only have 7 waivers. The one thing I did add to the Certificate of Action, so Bob and Maureen can make the change, on the last page, under conditions, 3, I'm sorry, number 4, "All revisions are subject to review and approval by NICH Engineering, Inc." I added NICH Engineering and the Rainham Planning Board prior to endorsement of the site plan. Other than that, if we make those adjustments on the waivers in that one little note, then I am going to ask for one more vote, that Russ will be signing the Certificate of Action. I know I did ask, or I did mention prior to, saying that Russ would be the guy, but this being a certificate of action, in my opinion, is a little separate, so. Make a motion if Russ signs this Certificate of Action, I will, Maureen and Bob, once you revise it, if you could resend it out, and we can take a look at it, and once we all send back our graces, then we can, Russ can sign. So, having Russ sign the Certificate of Action after a final review by the board, and it can be done by email. John?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Dan, yes? Any questions, Bob?
No, all set.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
Frank Gallagher, sorry Corona put us back a little bit.
That's okay, that's okay. I appreciate, I appreciate the fact that you've had this meeting, and thank you all.
Corona.
Okay.
Sean Carnes, good luck. So, next one I we have.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, sir.
I have a question for Mike Hyland, if he's listening.
Okay, Mike? Mike Hyland, you there?
I'm here. I couldn't get my unmute button fast enough. Yeah, what's up?
I have a question. At the beginning of the meeting, you said you were just recording and were not live. We have a public hearing for a zoning amendment, and if we're not live, it's probably, I'm not sure if it's going to be a valid hearing.
If you're not live for the zoning amendment, explain, I'm sorry, what is the amendment?
We have a public hearing for a zoning article, and that needs to be a live meeting, I believe, and if we're only recording this, I don't believe we can have a public hearing. I may be wrong, but that's my concern.
The, the, the meeting is still public to anybody, anyone. We sent out the information. They have the, the phone number, they have the, you know, the website, so anyone can join the meeting and, you know, call in, go on, on the computer and talk to any of you folks. It would be as if we were holding a public meeting at Town Hall, and my live cameras, you know, broke that night. The meeting is still legit. This, you know, it's just that we're not live streaming it on the channel or YouTube. So it's still an open meeting, and it's a public hearing. It was posted 48 hours before, so everyone knows about it.
Okay, just confusing. It's new to me, so.
I have a question. I have a question. Besides, besides, this is John.
Yeah.
Besides the posting in Town Hall and, and, you know, in front of the building and so forth, was anything sent out? Was there anything on the, the town website? That says we have a public hearing?
Generally, they are advertised, they have to be advertised as taken, too, so.
My question to Maureen, is it on the, the town website, the posting?
Maureen?
So Maureen doesn't have a mic?
This is Mike Hyland, and to answer John's question, it says, "Planning Board Meeting, Thursday, June 4th, 6:00 PM. Please join my meeting from your computer, Room 999036, call in this number." It has all the information about how to get on the meeting. It also has language about Governor Baker's March 12th order about these telemeetings, and it has the whole agenda, so.
Mike, you've answered the question.
Yes, I'm sorry for the
I should have.
It is on the website, okay, let's move forward.
It's a public meeting.
So everything is legit at this point, so. We have a, next on our agenda is a Form A, Church Street Noblin, King Philip Realty. And I will be abstaining. John Noblin is a partner of mine on another project, not this one. I don't have any financial interest in King Philip Realty, but I will abstain from voting on, on the Form A. So everybody had received a copy from, I believe Luke Kline Engineering. Burke, do you want to ask the questions on this one? Do you have, let me ask you, Burke, did, were you able to print out the? We have a Form A application, and we have, we had a Form A plan.
I have reviewed the plan.
Okay. Bob, would you like to, do you have a copy of the application?
I have the plan in front of me. Maureen has the application.
Okay, so, then I will read the application. This does, "Town of Rainham Planning Board, Form A, Application to Endorse a Plan Believe Not to Require Site Plan Approval, May 11th, 2020. Number 2 box is checked. The division of tract of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has frontage of at least such distance, which in this case, it's Rainham's zoning bylaw under Section 5.1, minimum requirement requires 200 feet. This is an 8-unit apartment building for the erection of a building on such lots. Every lot on the plan has frontage on a public way. Public way is church streets." So, that's what the Form A plan, uh, application says. Questions? Burke, you have, why don't you start with the questions? If anybody has questions for the?
Okay. I guess I'll start with, do any of the members of the board have any questions?
I don't.
I don't have any. It's pretty straightforward.
Did have a chance to review the plan?
Chris, do you have any questions on this?
No, it was simple. Just move the outline. Everything complied.
Okay. Luke Kline, I see you're in. Do you have any questions? Would you like to add anything?
Very simple, just creating that one lot for the 8-unit apartment building.
Okay. All right, Burke?
Bob, have you reviewed, and do you have any comments for us? Anything we're missing?
That's straightforward, Burke. It's just giving him the opportunity to put up another unit, proper zoning, proper setback.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who are, who have questions or comments?
Hearing none.
I take it they're hearing none, okay. I will make a motion that we approve a plan entitled, "Plan of Land, Church Street, Rainham, Massachusetts, Prepared for King Philip Realty Trust" by K-L-I-M. I guess it says engineering there. Dated dated May 10, 2020, as a plan not requiring subdivision approval. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Last second of it?
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Burke?
Aye.
We'll start with an aye. Russ?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And Dan has abstained. And since this is a Form A plan, Russ, our clerk, can sign it anyway. And since this is a Form A plan, Russ, our clerk, can sign it anyway.
Very good. That one's all set. Luke Kline, you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Somebody whistling? Nope, okay. All right, so, next we have a public hearing for zoning amendment, Church Street, Rainham. This zoning amendment is property that, uh, the board is familiar with. I own it, along with, uh, two other partners. And this zoning change is being presented by the selectmen. Now...
I need to read this, right?
Yes, you have that in front of you?
I do.
Dan, excuse me, Dan?
Yes.
I think you need to do a roll call vote to open the public hearing.
All right. So, Russ, before you do that, I will ask for a roll call vote to open a public hearing for a zoning change on Church Street and Rainham. John?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Dan, yes. Okay, public hearing is open. I will re, restate, it's a zoning change for a piece of property on the corner, I guess not on the corner, but have any access on Church Street and Route 44. So, Russ, why don't you read that description and the advertisement, the one in the paper?
In accordance with provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Rainham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 4th, 2020, at 6:20 PM at Rainham Veterans Memorial Town Hall, 558 South Main Street, to consider the following amendment to the Town of Rainham zoning bylaws. Amend Section 3.2 zoning map by rezoning two areas on the property identified on Town of Rainham Assessor's Map 16, Lot 55, at Route 44 and Church Street from Residential A, Business District, by taking any action relative thereto. Any person wishing to be heard or interested in the proposed amendments that appear at the time and place, completed a complete copy of the zoning bylaws and proposed amendments may be viewed at Rainham Town Clerk's Office, 558 South Main Street during regular office hours, Rainham Planning Board, Russell Clark. That's it.
Thank you. Well, Burke, again, on this one here, being that it is my piece, I am going to abstain from voting. It was submitted through the selectmen's office. It's the same piece. Who's there? It's the same piece that was put through last year. Two pieces of residential aid to be changed over to business. So, I guess I'll turn that over to you, Burke.
Okay. Uh, first of all, are there any members of the Board of Selectmen who proposed this who want to be heard?
Burke, I can, I can, I can give a statement for them.
Okay.
The Board of Selectmen is sponsoring this foreign article as part of a settlement negotiation with a developer who is involved with litigation with the town. The public hearing is part of the process required before the town meeting. Due to the ongoing litigation, my knowledge is limited to this information. So, additional questions can be asked tonight or asked and answered at the annual town meeting, which is scheduled for June 15th at the Rainham Middle School. That's where I encourage everyone to attend and ask their questions.
Okay, thank you. Well, it's been presented to the board before, so I think the board knows what it's about. But do any of the board members have any questions or comments? Um, I'll start with John.
No, I'm good.
Chris?
We were in favor of it last time. Still in favor of it.
Russ?
No questions. Still in favor.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion then that we recommend to the town meeting that the zoning change be approved.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, all in favor? John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Burke, yes. And Dan, Andrade is abstaining.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And, all right, so last on our agenda is a review, uh, of Gallagher Place. Before I do that, Chris, before you take off, why don't I, that's going to be the last thing on our agenda, so you don't miss out on all these other things. Discussion on board signatures for document forms and invoices. We already addressed that. Invoices, bills, payables. I have all the invoices. If I read them off?
Oh, they, Maureen sent us all copies.
Okay, so, everybody has, everybody has a, a list of all the, uh, all the bills and invoices. I don't have a problem. I normally sign them. I don't have a problem signing them. If, Russ, you're going to be going in Town Hall, so we only have one person, I guess. I will still have you sign the invoices and bills. I went through them all, and they're all okay.
Sure.
We have minutes to the meetings, January 16th, February 20th, and March 5th.
Burke will make a motion that we waive the reading and approve those three sets of minutes.
I'll second that.
Seconded. Does anybody have any questions, comments, revisions? Okay, so, it was seconded. John? For approving the minutes?
I approve.
Russ?
Yes, I approve.
Chris?
Yep.
Burke?
Yes.
Dan, yep. Next summer schedule. Are we planning, uh, I would assume, our next meeting is June 18th, and I hope we can have our next meeting at Town Hall. I would think by then, Town Hall should be allowed to let us come up with a plan. We were working on a plan to have this meeting at Town Hall. But the governor extended his stay. So, I do plan on having June 18th meeting at Town Hall. Summer schedule. What we have done in the past, I'm sure everybody's familiar with it. We have, uh, we have not made changes to our summer schedule. If you have a vacation, don't feel bad not going to a meeting through the summer. Please try not to miss two meetings in a row, if that's possible. Or if a public meeting starts, then please make sure you can attend all the meetings for that public, uh, public hearing. Other than that, if you're going on vacation, just let Maureen know, and she'll put it on the list. And it's always worked out good in the past. Does anybody have any objections to that?
No.
John? No. Russ? No.
Burke's good.
Chris?
No.
No.
Bob?
I do, but I can about no.
I know you want the summer off. You've had... All right, so, uh, schedule's going to stay the same. Correspondence. I do not have any correspond, oh, well, I I have one thing I'm going to partially read. It was an email that I received. It didn't come through Maureen, so I'll, I'll leave that one. Planning Board Coordinator Updates. Bob, can you give us a... The next one, Bob, Serpent, so you might as well take the next two, because I saw you...
So, uh, just so the board knows, I had a conference meeting with, um, the State District 5. The, um, construction document plans for the reconstruction of 138 are at 100%. The project has been changed. It's going to be reconstructed from King Philip Street all the way through to the end of Robinson Road. It's just going to skip over the highway, and they're going to pick it up on the other side of the highway. So, it's a much bigger project than what they planned before. It's going to start in about 11 months. It's probably going to take, uh, at least a year to a year and a half to do it, because they're actually, they're taking the concrete out of the road. Uh, they're ripping the whole concrete base out, and they're going to put in new gravel, and they're going to widen, and they're going to have the bike lanes like we had seen before. So, it's quite an extensive project. Uh, we went over detailed, uh, uh, plans for detours that I need to share with Police and Fire and to finalize those. But, um, they are finalizing all their documents. The design is complete, and they're ripping up the concrete bedding that's, uh, been a topic of discussion for some time. So, quite a project that's going to have, uh, quite a disturbance to the area for, you know, the better part of a year, maybe more. But when it's all done, um, you're going to get a, a nice Route 138. Questions?
Yeah, so Bob, they're saying 2022 now, or 2023?
2021. Next summer.
It's not going to, it's not going to start for 11 months, and then it's going to run for a year after that, unless I misunderstood what you said.
They're going to start around June, end of May or June of 2021. That's a year from now. It's probably going to take, it's probably going to take until the end of '22 to complete the project.
Okay, so, 2022. All right.
Okay, completion. Any other questions?
No.
I'll move on.
Yeah, Route 138 is sort of like the commuter rail. We, we keep getting updates on it, and it keeps getting bigger and bigger and gets bounced back, and so, I guess we'll wait for the next update.
Well, some, at least it's some positive information, and it's going in the right direction. We actually have some time, timeframes in place now, so. I'll move on to Serpent and the master plan. Obviously, because of the, the situation we're in, things have gotten kicked down the road a little bit. Uh, I have compiled 11, 11 names for the master plan, uh, committee. Uh, I will have them approved by the selectmen at their next meeting. Once they are approved, and they're all sworn in, uh, the people at Serpent want to do a, uh, planning, a meeting immediately, and that meeting will plan out the outreach and the workshop, uh, schedule. And once that's done, I'll share that with you. So, Jed and Lizette have been working, um, as quick as they can. Uh, we need this committee put together, and it looks like we'll probably have a first committee meeting within a couple of weeks.
All right. Anything else?
That's all I have.
John, do you have any Serpent updates?
I, I did, I did attend the Serpent meeting. We did a, a go-to meeting just like this. Basically, most of the talk was about, uh, the phased opening of the state. Uh, one thing that did come up of interest, and I passed it on to, uh, John Donahue, is that the, uh, the governor is saying that if someone shows up for the town meeting and does not want to wear a mask, they have to be admitted, and the towns have to provide a separate area for people without masks. But that could be a problem for us, but as I said, I passed it on to John. He's going to pass it on to, uh, Matt, the Health Inspector and the, and the Board of Selectmen, and we'll see what they do with that. It hasn't been passed yet, but it's in the works. That's about it. It, it was kind of quick.
All right. Very good. Plans to sign, 1051 Locust Street, Appleby. That was a... That needs all, that's going to need all signatures. How do we handle, uh, that plan? Usually, Form A's clerk can sign a Form A. The only way we can have Russ, I believe, sign that by himself is if we adopt a something and have it registered, recorded at the registry, I believe. I would have to have that clarified, or how, uh, how can we get that plan, Bob, so everybody can get a signature on it, or at least three?
You only need three.
Right, three people.
Yeah.
If, uh, just three is want to come in the office one day, I'll have it in the middle room for you to sign.
So, Russ will be going in anyway?
I can go in.
John will be going in. Chris, do you have any meetings?
I, I go in and assign things every week.
All right, so...
Just give me a heads up. Give me a heads up when you're going to be there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Usually Tuesdays, but today I signed.
That is that. We have, uh, next meeting's June 18th. And last on our agenda, Chris, you're going to recuse yourself?
Hey, just one question, Dan. That, the June 18th meeting, Paramount Drive, is that the trucking outfit? Is that what that is?
675 Paramount Drive.
That is not, that is not the trucking outfit. It's another, uh, medical building. The 675 Paramount Drive is the last building. It's actually on Route 44 in the corner of Paramount and 44. They're putting a second building on that lot.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's the only thing on the agenda for the 18th so far. Okay, so, as I was mentioning, we have, on the agenda first, it's a review of compliance with the amendment, amended Certificate of Action dated May 2nd, 2018, for roadway upgrade plan of Gallagher Place. So... I'm not sure. This was an amended... Maureen, did you get my email back? Did you send me, uh, oh, yes, you did. I'm printing out, uh... Okay, so, we have, uh, let me just give you a little background on this. We have, uh, a meeting on April 5th. Jimmy Brennan was represented, Mr. Gallagher. And the action was drawn up. The plan was approved. "Plan proposing roadway improvements to Gallagher Place subdivision plan as outlined in letter copied attached, dated 2018, from Edmund J. Brennan. Twenty feet wide and shall be paved." Added to the plan stating that no further element is allowed. The plan stating the road to be maintained as a private way. A public place without further improvements approved by the Rainham Planning Board. This certificate of action shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to contact the office with Daniel J. Andrade's Chairman's Signature. Actually, came out of our planning board meeting that was unanimously voted to approve. Then... Then, I received an email from Maureen. Chris Gallagher contacted her. Webber's got the squirrel on the cage running. Boys, I don't know what that is.
For the record, I'm having trouble hearing as well.
Okay, so Maureen had emailed me and asked, said that Chris contacted her. She was wrong.
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I, I missed everything you just said for about 30 seconds. Your screen froze up.
Can I, can I ask Mike a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mike, are you there?
I'm always there, John, always.
Mike, what is the background noise that keeps coming in? Is it interference in the, in the connection? Or is one of the people who have mics are open have something running in it in their kitchen or, you know, is the dishwasher on or something? Because it keeps coming in and it, Dan, it blocks out every third word of yours. We have no idea what you're saying.
I think everybody that's on green except me speaking should shut their thing off. And then when you have something you want to say, you can click it on. Trust me, we're not going anywhere with this.
I, I agree. That's what we should do. We should all mute.
You're not going to miss anything. So.
The one, one, one piece of advice, Dan, would be to have everyone, I can mute everyone right now and open you up. I'm going to leave Burke unmuted because he's on a phone. So it's not as easy for him to unmute himself.
Yeah, no, I need, yeah, right, that's fine.
But everyone else on the door right now. So give me one second and you guys can do your thing. This is Dawn. Let me Frank. And then you should be good now, Dan. And if anyone has an issue on your computer, hit the unmute button and you're good to go.
All right, very good. Thank you. So it says the board approved roadway improvements Gallagher Place subdivision plan as outlined in the letter copy attached dated April 5th, 2018 from Edmund J. Brennan. This shall be 20-foot length of blacktop pavement having 18-foot width extending into the roadway from the entrance. This may be in addition to cobblestone apron. The remainder of the roadway shall be widened to 18 feet of gravel as shown on the plan. A note shall be added to the plan stating that no further development is allowed. And the roadway is to be maintained as a private way and not accepted by public, public way. This certificate of action shall be recorded by the Registry of Deeds. So Chris had emailed Maureen and told Maureen or asked Maureen to change the certificate of action. Maureen sent me a text and said, Chris thinks the certificate of action is incorrect. I said on an email, and I have the email basically real simple, really. And that I would look into the minutes to the meeting. Time had passed. I'm sure I was busy and I, it was never brought up to my attention again. And then I was kind of flawed when I found out that I signed a second certificate of action, that the planning board had no idea was even floating. That generally, usually if there would be something of this nature, I would get a sticky note or something or a flag or something on it. And I did sign it. I take full responsibility for signing the certificate of action, the second one that the planning board didn't approve. So I waited and I spoke with Burke. And we felt the best thing to do is give it to Town Council. I wasn't going to get into, it's wrong. No member of the board should be, he wasn't in the meeting. He wasn't part of the meeting. He did everything that he was supposed to do by stepping away from the meeting. He does have financial interests in it. And it is his piece of property. He did not come back to the planning board. He didn't ask his attorney to present anything to the planning board about an error that he felt may have been in the certificate of action. I read the minutes. The first certificate of action is, is correct, but. So that's, that's the history of that. Now, we have two certificate of actions. The one that they presented for review of compliance is the second one. The one that the board never saw. I received.
I don't want to interrupt, Mr. Chairman. I apologize. But I would like to speak on that issue specifically at some point, whenever you're included.
Okay, this is, yep, this is, we're not putting this in executive session, so I will, I'll give you the floor as, if it's appropriate to discuss how a member of the board can change his own certificate of action, I guess. So it's more a discussion for the board at this point, but I will give you. No, that's all I have to say. So let me read on. June 3rd, 2020, I got this notification from Town Council. It was done in an email. Notification of executive session to discuss complaint or charges brought against a public officer and/or options to convene an open session. Now, this goes basically, he's asking me to schedule a meeting to reprimand Mr. Gallagher for his inappropriate actions of falsifying a certificate of action. I sent this to Town Council because I felt it was Town Council's job and duty to do what our town councils would do. And I've asked and asked and asked what's going on with it. I was told it was sent to the State Ethics Commission in the Attorney General's Office and they have not heard anything back. Anywhere you look under a mass ethics and Mr. Gallagher's attorney can argue all he wants, but anywhere you look under the ethics is totally irresponsible or wrong to do that. But I also don't think that it's up to this board or myself to take it upon us to basically hold a hearing of law to reprimand Mr. Gallagher. I can do that myself in a regular public hearing that we will have discussion on. But that's not on the agenda for tonight. What is on the agenda for tonight is that the plan being submitted for acceptance, road acceptance approval of a site plan being done by an approved certificate of action. That's what's in front of us tonight. So with that said, Mr. Bowen, if you have anything that you would like to comment on regarding the plan that Mr. Frank Gallagher supplied to the Billing Inspector to give to the planning board for our endorsement, that's what you can talk about. That's what's on, that's what's on the agenda tonight.
Two issues to clear up. First of all, I want to say there has been a response from the Massachusetts Ethics Commission. There was a May 1st, 2020 response from them, which I informed Town Council about where they exonerated Mr. Gallagher, found that there was nothing to be investigated further and cleared him. I had a further conversation with Inspector McWilliams today to confirm that there was no other outstanding or pending investigations or, or inquiries into Mr. Gallagher or any conduct. And he confirmed that there was no outstanding issues related to him and that the matter regarding Mr. Gallagher was closed. In regards to the certificate of action, both the, the one issued on May 12, I mean, excuse me, on April 19th, 2018, and that issued on May 2nd, 2018. I think a lot of the confusion here has stemming from that there is a difference between what was actually said at the hearing and the minutes. And that's not meant to be criticism. Obviously, it's not a transcript. It's a hard job to keep these minutes, a hard and thankless job. But if you listen to the actual recording itself, it's on YouTube. I'm sure other, other methods. What was ultimately voted on was the description of the certificate of action from May 2nd, 2018. I have specific timestamps.
I gotta interrupt you because we're not discussing, you know, basically what we have in front of us. We have a certificate of action that matches the minutes to the meeting for April 5th.
Yes, but the minute's not controlling the actual meeting is and the meetings don't match the minutes. I have specific timestamps, specifically at 5 minutes and 20 seconds of the original recorded meeting.
We're going to, we have, I have Mr. Ted's letter, Town Council, that I have to address.
I have.
I have two certificate of actions that was done, one that the planning board knows about, one that the planning board didn't know about. If the, I'd like to see copies of the, and I guess, I don't know if Town Council had received copies of the ethics, but I really find that hard to believe that anybody can change their own certificate of action without.
Assuming my client doesn't have objection, I can forward that to everybody.
Without, well, again, I guess you would, you can argue to the cows come home, but if I ever changed a certificate of action that the planning board did and I ever called Maureen and asked her to change one of my certificates that the planning board chair did and slid it into the pile of papers for, to be signed and got signed, that would be, I'd probably have handcuffs on, never mind being slapped. But with that said, tonight, the plan that's in front of us does not match the certificate of action that was presented. I would advise, I would advise members of the board to review from now until the next meeting. Review the minutes to the meetings. Maureen can send you both. I would advise you to go on YouTube and put in the date of the meeting that we, the meeting that we had on that. And it was Russ, John and Burke and myself. So listen to the minutes to, listen to the meeting, read the minutes, read the certificate of action.
And I can refer to specific time codes in that.
Mr. Bowen, please, Attorney Bowen, this is not your hearing to interject or speak if, at the next hearing when we have on June 18th, I believe it is, when we discuss this and hopefully we will be in presence at the town, June 18th, that we can discuss it. Everybody can review it. And I guess people are going to, Russ is going to look at it and John will look at it. We all voted. We all voted the same. It's not anything that is, should it be, you know, widely disagreed about. It is what it is. We don't have two houses in the town of Rainham on gravel. The road was, the subdivision plan was approved way back 25 years ago. And it did say that the lot number two cannot be built on until they come back to the planning board for improvements to that road. And to change a certificate of action to make it with no improvements to the road is just, is, is, you know, totally wrong. And John, I, I would advise you to look into it because I know your son owns the house over on Gallagher Place now.
Yes, he does.
Not sure how that involves, you know, it's a family member. I'm not sure how that, I don't want.
Let me just tell you, first, first of all, I, on Tuesday, I filed a disclosure of apparent conflict of interest with the town clerk because I thought that subject might come up. And back in, in April 2018, my son was not there in the house. As a matter of fact, the house wasn't even for sale. He wasn't looking for a home. He didn't buy that home until the following year when it became available. So I don't think there's any conflict of interest. Anything that this board decides, I don't think has any bearing on my son at all in terms of any financial implications to him. If there are any financial implications, they'd be to Mr. Gallagher and not, not to my son.
Okay, so.
I, I have one question for you, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I do. I want you to, next, when we discuss it, I want you to vote anyway. You voted on the first one. And like I said, it was unanimous, so.
That, that's why I felt I should, I should be involved in this one because I was involved in the original.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I'm glad you're staying. I, I think you should, you should vote on the second term.
Okay. I have one question, Dan. You, you've mentioned a couple of times that the, the second certificate of action that you signed that the, the board did not see. Could, could we, could we get a, get a copy of that or at least tell us what it's? I mean, right now, we're, you're saying that it was different from the first one, but we don't, I don't know. I don't know how or what was different about it. Can we get a copy of that?
I read them both. What I'm going to do is we're going to send, I'm going to make sure Maureen has the original plan that was approved back 25 years ago, the certificate of action back then. The video, you will have YouTube site. I'll make sure that you have the, the address.
I saw the video this, this afternoon and I watched it.
Okay, so I'll have all the information so everybody can review the same thing.
Thank you.
Be prepared for, for the June 18th meeting. So with that said, the plan that's presented, we're going to table, we're going to table the plan until June 18th and everybody can have their opportunity to chime in at that time. Burke?
Chairman?
You have question, comment?
Burke, Burke has a question.
Yep.
What, where, there is a plan that someone is asking to have signed at this time?
Apparently Frank Gallagher presented an as-built plan and gave it to Bob to issue, for the board to issue a compliance, basically saying that the plan meets the requirements of the certificate of action so we can sign off.
Okay, so.
That's what's in front of us.
My, my question is, it's not a Form A plan, so we don't have a time limit of 21 days? And it's not a subdivision where we need to have a public hearing?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, the plan, and I don't know, Frank, maybe you might want to go out and measure because the pavement that's there, I measured and it doesn't even meet. it doesn't even meet second certificate of action. So you might, just to let you know, I think 16 feet of pavement or 17 feet. So make a motion that we continue this until everybody gets an opportunity to review. I will also send you the email I received from Attorney Pete Nick, Town Council. I will send you a copy. I will try to find my phone records. Because the first thing on the complaint from Mr. Ted Pete Nick was that you contacted a representative of the planning board regarding planning board vote regarding improvements to Gallagher Place in which you had a personal interest as owner and applicant and could not participate in the vote. Chris had called me prior to that meeting and asked me to or kind of told me that he would like not to pave the roads, that he would do cobblestones. And we can, I'll find the phone call that came into my phone half hour before our meeting. Not sure how I would know that he would want cobblestones unless he didn't tell me he wanted cobblestones. Because nowhere in the town of Rainham have we ever asked people to put cobblestones. He said he wanted to put five feet of cobblestones and pavement. I made that motion with additional claren of trees and that type of thing. In that same conversation, he wanted to know why I was giving his sister a hard time. And I explained to him that I told Frank that it's not up to the board to give access 50 feet off of somebody else's property. That's not what the bylaw meant. And I told him that I did tell Frank and the sister in the, in a open meeting to discuss it with long-built homes to try to work out a deal. And then he reminded me that my plan was coming up that night for a project that I had. And I said, yeah, yeah, it is. So when you watch the, when you watch the the meeting of that night, watch the whole meeting. And so everybody will be informed. So a motion is to continue until June 18th. We'll put it on
I'll second that motion.
We'll put it on for let's put it on for 6:30, if there's anything in front. So we're going to continue until June 18th, so 6:30. It was seconded by Burke. Russ?
Yes.
John?
Hi.
And Dan, yes. Okay, so that is that. We have we went through general business. Our next meeting is June 18th. And that's on 675 Paramount Drive. Your motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Press? Burke?
Yes.
Yes.
Dan, yes. Motion to adjourn is approved. We will see everybody, June 18th.